Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues but take no formal action. Following the Healthy Washington Roadmap to Recovery Phase Three requirements, the city council may conduct in-person meetings while continuing to provide remote access to their meetings until the Washington State restrictions are lifted. Therefore facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting will either reconvene only virtually or be adjourned. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco in Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with that, thank you. Thank you everyone for being here and we'll have a rule call please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you. Everybody's here. We rise for the flags too please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next we'll go on to verbal reports from council members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share over the past week? Mr. Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, this afternoon, I attended the Hanford Area Economic Fund Investment Committee's full board presentation and meeting. We had a couple of items that were pretty interesting. The purpose of that is to kind of recirculate Hanford waste fees to non-Hanford centric jobs. The two items we funded were, one, a new brewery over in Richland. Trying to think of the name right offhand. It's owned by the Driscoll family. It sounds pretty exciting. They're already under construction, so hopefully they'll open by the end of the year. Another one is a really interesting project in Kennewick to construct a new multi-story residential and commercial mixed unit in downtown. They've purchased the land already. They're working on popping down everything that the existing structure. I think they've actually done the demo work. And now it's up to, they're planning on forty units and it's going to be kind of more of the high end. And again, it's promoting that type of walkability. So it'll be really interesting to see how that project flushes out. You know, obviously in downtown Richland, there are some new opportunities that we're seeing. So to see it in Kennewick and then determine maybe a feasibility here in Pasco, what our opportunities are to capture that type of revitalization of the downtown or other parts will be really interesting to mark. So I'm excited to have been part of that decision to fund those, but also quite frankly, excited to see what works and potentially doesn't work, but fingers crossed what works in other cities across the river. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Anyone else? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just reporting, I attended a Good Roads Association meeting last week. We have not, we have not met and personally for a long time, we had a hybrid meeting with some folks listening in in person and some folks online. And it was as chaotic as you would imagine, but we went through it. We had a great presentation from the Washington Trucking Association with some really informative information for all the regions that were represented. But even just thinking locally, you know, how do we support our trucking industry and what the future of that looks like? Just wondering about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. And if there's no one else, I'll also report I attended.
Mayor.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Barajas. Go ahead.
Yes, real quick. So just to recap, on last week, I did forget to mention the police department had their first Coffee with a Cop out in on the Yokes parking area, right behind the Taco Bell. It was a great turnout. I was happy to see that a lot of people were compliant, wearing their mask and came out to meet and greet the officers. I think I saw a good sixty to seventy people come out and, you know, just meet the officers and have a chat and just get to see them. Also, just real quick, this past Saturday, the twenty-fourth, was the National Drug Take Back Day. I was out there volunteering with the youth coalition that I'm part of and happy to report that it was a good turnout as well. The officers were able to collect eleven boxes of perished medications that will then be turned to DEA for incineration. So again, another good community event. Our officers are out in the community, connecting with the community. A lot of people came by saying thank you for your service. Grateful people. It was just good to see the community out there and just saying hi.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. And I attended a meeting, our continuity of operations that we're continuing to have on Fridays and going over a lot of the programs that are going on, on how we're getting to our citizens, some of the crews, and you're going to hear a little bit more about this later tonight. I just want to keep encouraging everyone to remain safe, to remain just cognizant of others. And while we're socializing and making sure that our numbers, you know, we're on the verge of a rise with more people testing positive, I actually did go to the test site, at the CBC test site, and it was good to see that there was a lot of people getting tested. The people at the test site providing the tests were just phenomenal, wonderful customer service. And we're just trying really hard to maintain our numbers low. We are actually a little above our two hundred per one hundred thousand people population metrics, but we are still below barely on the hospital rate. So we just want to keep encouraging everybody to maintain distance, be safe. And I know it's frustrating and I know we're trying to get back to some type of normal, but I just want to encourage everyone to keep going. So with that, we'll move right along to our item number five on the items for discussion tonight. And we have a presentation from Mobile Outreach Professionals Field Update. And I want to go ahead and present our Police Chief Ken Rosky tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, it's actually my privilege to have our coordinating group out of Lourdes come present on our Mobile Outreach Professionals. These are the mental health professionals that are embedded with our police department since 2018 when we started that program. And these professionals aid our officers in the field. So I'd like to introduce Cameron Fortmeyer, the manager of that program from Lourdes. Cameron?
Good evening, Mr. Fortmeyer. How you doing?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Before I start, I'd like to bring up Deanna Petrilli, who's also the team lead for this program. She's the supervisor that's out on the field and actually does the work as well. So she's a working supervisor. This is Ezra Alshakli and Nathan Davis. They are also your Pasco Mobile Outreach Professionals that run around with the officers. So just wanted to kind of shine a light. They can, we'll go through the presentation and then afterwards, if you want to ask individual questions or just open it up to the team in general, we'll be happy to do so.
Thank you.
So presenting on the Mobile Outreach Team today, start off, kind of give you a little bit of history on how this came about, a little bit about the existing program and what to expect from the future here. So historically, we've asked a lot of our law enforcement. And before this, they were awarded very little options other than arrest. And so when you're on scene dealing with somebody in a heightened state and they are chronically mentally ill or have a severe substance use disorder, cops were asked to do a lot and the only option to that was arrest. And as we've seen, especially having one of my four programs, being in jail mental health, even if you do have mental health professionals in jail, it's not a therapeutic environment, right? The likelihood of them stabilizing or preventing further decompensation, jail isn't equipped to be a care facility, a detox, whatever the person may need. So a lot of times when our mentally ill population is in jail, they would be sent on competency or restoration orders. And so those are done by the state hospitals. And they would sit for where you and I would make a disorderly conduct, get a rinky-dink kind of nuisance type crime, we'd be out the next day. If they raise competence, even though it's one of those crimes, they're sitting in there for months, sometimes longer, awaiting for a state evaluator to come in to see if they understand court proceedings. So this had in the past also resulted in some patients dying inside jail. And so the state noticed right away with the backed up of eastern and western, more so on the west side than what we have on the eastern side over here. The court costs were going through the roof. They were, patients were decompensating. And what Washington State decided to do with that was basically find the state. And so with that, they decided to use that dollars to fund some of these programs to prevent the recidivism rate, were sent over and over of overbearing of state hospitals and our criminal justice system. And so one of ours was Phase Three. So the first two phases were dedicated to putting behavioral health inside the jail system. Here we already had, both Franklin and Benton County do have mental health in there. So we didn't qualify for the first three phases, but we did is put in for a CIT plus program to get on the front end of that. So we didn't want to wait around and get people out of jail. We wanted to prevent them from getting into the criminal justice system in the first place. And so what we did with that in Phase Three is we developed a mobile outreach team. At first, we staffed that with both master level and bachelor level. And quickly, we decided that to make this program streamlined, we made these master level professionals designated crisis responders. And so those are the individuals in Washington State that can do ITA evaluations and put somebody in voluntarily to either a secure detox facility or a psychiatric facility. So quickly, we learned right away that that's what we wanted to do. And so the target population of this grant is for those chronic offenders who have had a criminal justice history, but have also had a state either hospitalization or a ten seventy-seven competency restoration order. You got anything out of that? So what we do now is even though we work with all ten law enforcement entities of Benton Franklin County, we decided to station home departments within Pasco, Richland, and Kennewick to get more of the high call volume areas. And so currently, we have Nathan and Ezra here, Stefna Pasco, Dee and her coworker are in Kennewick, and then we have two people in Richland.
And one of the benefits that we found is that our law enforcement agencies in this area work really well together. And so when we first started this program, we've pretty much met with as many people as we can. So if there is a call outside of those city limits, we are able to be mobile and go and help those officers respond in Prosser and Connel, all those other areas as well.
And they work very well with each other. They'll either drop us off, make sure that we meet somewhere halfway in between if we are going to one of the outside entities. And what sets this program aside from some of the other models that have more of a mobile crisis with social workers is that we don't respond separately. We actually write in tandem with law enforcement. So we're seeing the same thing at the same time. Officers seeing the exact same thing as clinicians. We can come up with a plan together rather than doing it separate where traditionally you would law enforcement would come on to somebody. They would determine there was some other higher level of care that was needed, take them to ER, and they're sitting in there for potential hours waiting for whoever's available at what time in the day to get there. And so this is a different way of doing things that is very streamlined and has been extremely effective. I've worked in this field for twenty years and I haven't seen anything as far as community wise resource of using ED, using EMS, using law enforcement and crisis responders all in tandem. It's a, it's a pretty big deal.
And prior to this program, I worked at Regular Crisis for a couple of years. And so I, there were times where I would go out and meet law enforcement in the community, but it wasn't a regular thing. And then when we switched to this program and I began writing with law enforcement, there's a huge amount of information that mental health professionals will miss by responding after law enforcement. They do an amazing job. They deescalate a situation. They can get things really taken care of and sort of wrapped up in a sense when we finally get there. But when we get there with them, we have the same understanding of how maybe more severe the situation was with them at the same time.
So usually we let you finish and then we'll ask questions, but is it okay if we ask questions while you're going through?
Yeah.
So if you guys have a question, you can go ahead and ask it. Because my question to you is when you guys respond and you say you work in tandem with the police officers, so does that mean there's one of you are at the police station? Or do you get called out? How does that work where you guys get to go in tandem with a police officer?
So daily, we are assigned to an officer and a patrol officer. So we meet with the sergeant. We have a conversation. Okay, this officer's available for the day. And then we get in the patrol car and we are out for our shift. So I mean, we might be in office doing some paperwork or whatever, but usually that doesn't, we get called out to the field anyways. So we are directly there in the car with them.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question. I didn't know if there was somebody on duty and then there's a call and then you just, that officer will head over to that, to that call, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So they maintain their general job duties and, you know, take care of things as they need to. And then when a mental health call pops up, whichever officer has the MHP for that shift will try and prioritize and get us to wherever we need to go.
Perfect. Thank you. And Mayor Protem Barajas, if you have a question, go ahead and feel free to interject because I can't see if your hand's up or anything. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor. I was actually able to meet Ezra out in the, at the Coffee with a Cop. I'm sorry, I think that is her name. She was assigned to one of the officers, Officer Garza, if I'm not mistaken. And I did talk with her a little bit about her role. So it's very interesting, interesting, and I'm thankful that they are out in the community.
Thank you.
And that brings us right into our next couple topics too. We wanted to be different than Sark or CPS or some of the other people who partner. We wanted to see things in real time. And second, sometimes turn into hours for somebody who's in a crisis situation. And so with these guys riding along right there, we're tasked with stabilizing the immediate crisis on scene. So there is no callbacks, nothing like that. And our whole purpose to at least start was to help them deescalate. We learned really quickly that officers don't need our help with the escalation. They're actually very good at it, a lot better than some of the clinicians I've worked with. What they lack and what they do need is navigating the system, speaking the lingo, making the call from point A to point B and connecting the dots so that we can streamline a process that gets bogged down too much and people fall through the cracks. And so we learned, we've done this since 2008 now, and so we have the process, yeah, 2018? Yeah. So we've streamlined that process and figured out exactly what our niche needs to be. And we can help deescalate some situations that don't require police to begin calling in the first place. And that's what we find out a lot, a lot of welfare checks that are called out. A lot of things don't actually have a criminal element to it, but there is an element of safety. And so kind of having the two together, we can still have a social worker that can help deescalate and have an officer on whichever one works best for the situation. So we do on-scene evaluation, triage, placement, so it cuts down on all of that time. So the evaluation takes place on scene. We've already made our referrals and phone calls. We've determined what our disposition is and we already have secure transport right then and there with police. And so it's kind of the best of both worlds coming from behavioral health standpoint. When we were doing evaluations and then figuring out whether this is civil law and how it plays in the criminal law, trying to coordinate transportation, this just streamlined the entire thing and everybody works together to do it. So.
Yeah, we generally take a pretty big consultation role when it comes to dealing with a high intense situations. The officers will get there. They'll make sure the scene is safe. We're not getting out of the cars until the officers can make sure it's safe first. And like Cameron said earlier, they are amazing at what they do. I've been here since the beginning. Ezra's been here for a long time too. Like we have seen these officers really be able to talk to people and show compassion in a way that for those of us who haven't been exposed to law enforcement, didn't really realize in the beginning. So we have actually learned just as much from them as they have learned from us. And by combining these two worlds, we've been able to understand how to work together better in a way that in the end, obviously helps the community and the individuals who are suffering from chronic mental illness.
So some changes that are coming up. So our grant period for the second term ends in July of 2021. And so we'll be entering our last year of funding through the True Blood Confinement Dollars. And so what that will do is that that will put us from twelve full-time FTEs to ten FTEs. And so prior, we had a mixture of Mobile Outreach Counselors and the DCR level, which is the Mobile Outreach Professional, the master level positions. We also have three certified peer specialists, and that's kind of the young song hero of this program. These individuals are able to either one, make sure that they connect the dots if they have been detained to a secure detox facility or a psychiatric hospital. They can make sure that outpatient setup benefits are intact, that somebody's helping them with discharge planning, especially for those undocumented that aren't going to get regular outpatient services. They also are able to meet people out in the field and follow-up care with them. So those will retain though. So we will keep for this next grant term, those three positions. And we will convert all existing positions to designate crisis responders. So everybody will have the ability to do detentions to both secure detox facilities and a psych hospital.
Excuse me, Councilmember Serrano?
Yeah. If you don't mind taking a quick pause here to kind of focus on your grant funding. Let's walk back to the FTEs. You're dropping from twelve to ten, right? What's the ideal number? Is it twelve? Is it ten? Is it eighteen? Is it thirty? I mean, and I understand that, you know, anyone would take whatever you're offered, right? But what's the real number for need? And what's the opportunity for more grant funding, you know, come the next six, fourteen months, twelve months?
If we were talking ideally, we would have twenty-four seven coverage. And that would be probably right around three to four FTEs a city. And so that would be ideal, but of course, funding and those, depending on where those grants come from, we have WASPIC that's, you know, more law enforcement kind of oriented. We also have more things that may come through. I've been in touch with NAMI looking at ledge that have upcoming dollars that they're going to put into the system. So there's talks about all different things. There's nothing concrete right now that I could say we're applying for this. But there's lots of talk of other funding available. The problem with chasing that funds is everybody kind of has a target population or an agenda, right? And we want to keep this open for everybody, regardless of Medicaid, regardless of status, regardless of whatever. And that's the benefit of having individual cities or counties fund that is because you can make it to what you wanted as the city. Whether you want to put one with fire, whether you want to put one with EMS, Pasco, it's the city's resource. Where what we have to do right now is very specific to the grant funds. And so expanding outside of whatever the grant funding source was supposed to be for makes it a little hard where if we had other opportunities for funding, we could expand upon what the city's needs is rather than what the grant specifics are.
Good. I appreciate that because that just dovetailed and I think answered my second question, which is in the event that you were to find separate funding, you wouldn't be excluded from your grant funding, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So grant goals. Our whole purpose of this was divert unnecessary arrests. And so make sure that we're diverting to an appropriate service that can make the person's either current crisis deescalate or provide some stabilization for him and get him back and reduce on recidivism rate. We also wanted to cut down on those competency services in general. A lot of those services, coming from a clinician standpoint, maybe I shouldn't say this in a public forum, but they're to just judge whether the person understands court proceedings. It's not a real competency issue of can we restore this person? That's a separate order. So some of the person have to go through when we know the population and they've been in the system over and over has multiple arrests, multiple hospitalizations. It's safe to say we can argue this person's either incompetent or competency's been raised. And so having them sit in the system, so the whole grant was to reduce on that. And also relieve that burden historically placed on law enforcement to be all of the above, social workers, SUDPs, all of the other things that they're tasked with doing when we have professionals who can do that with them. And one of the other things that we haven't mentioned in this is with the Crisis Intervention Team Training. Our whole goal was to increase the amount of officers that have been trained. The goal of the grant was twenty percent. We beat that in the first year by increasing that to fifty percent. So Deanna is actually the chairperson of our local CIT, CIT, and she has increased to two a year rather than just the one a year that we've been doing. COVID kind of put some kibosh on that, but we're going to start that back up. And then provide cost savings to the cities and counties. There's a cost savings for if we're diverting people and they're not in jail, they're not sitting there for days at a time and those jail days aren't being theirs. Cut down on officer overtime who'd be tasked with sitting at Lourdes Medical Center with them or whatever there is. So on and so on, there's other cost benefits attached to that. And probably if we're looking at sustainable funding, about a hundred K would get us a full-time DCR to use for one of those FTEs. So program benefits, this bridges communication from multiple worlds. We all have acronyms. We all speak different language. And so at least being in the same car, we can figure out which each one is talking about and whether we're using acronyms correctly or which way is up and down. We can figure that out when we're working together. We operated in polar opposites worlds prior to this. And so it's given us in the behavioral health field, a completely different understanding of the criminal field and probably vice versa for them.
There's definitely, it opens your eyes to a lot of things and it makes the communication easier. You know, obviously if you have relationships with people, you can communicate easier and smoother with them. And by doing this in this program, all the mental health professionals have learned how law enforcement talks about situations, clinicians, we are able to understand and translate what they're telling us on scene and put that into clinical usage and how we make determinations to help the clients. So it's really benefited being right there with them in the cars constantly, you know, being inseparable basically in order to really help the clients. Because before, an officer would call and be trying to express what they're seeing on scene, trying to explain why they think the client's not doing well. And it doesn't really translate over the phone or, you know, the words we're using are different and it's hard to make that happen. We're now, everything that we've learned, we've been able to take back to other mental health professionals and be like, okay, when the officer is explaining this situation, this is what's going on. And so it's really helping everybody. They're now able to use some of our terms so that way it makes sense in both directions.
And so with them being on the scene like Dee's talking about, we reduce a lot of wait times for all parties involved, decrease unnecessary emergency department visits or need to wait and kick it over to a crisis. We can safety plan on scene with the parties involved that are there, whether that's family, friends, loved ones, divert unnecessary or misuses of nine-one-one calls, welfare checks, that type of thing. And we can utilize a lot of our first responder services a lot more streamlined, a lot more efficient when we do those.
And the other piece that's not really listed on here is the trainings. He touched on that with the CIT program. We've been able to go into that and kind of translate again, some of the stuff that used to be preached to them in a way that will then make more sense on scene, you know, I'm able to use tactical terms to help it make more sense for the officers to translate for their world. And then on top of that, we're also offering other trainings, whether it's Mental Health First Aid, which is also an internationally known training basis. And then also for their, like monthly trainings, we offer different small trainings for that as well.
So just some of the program stats since March of this year. So without unduplicating, meaning we have only seen them once, we see the same people multiple times though, right? And so since program inception, we've had one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine of those unduplicated with five thousand eight hundred total contacts. Our peer support has done one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight of those. And the individual, so this is more of a grant specific program. The grant really wanted us to target high utilizers or people with high recidivism rate. And so tracking that, the average individual we come in contact with already has prior charges. So nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four are the total charges that we've come into contact with. And so that's also saying that with history, we've also prevented a lot of recidivism rate by doing that. For the ITA evaluations for Deanna and the rest of the team, they've done a hundred and sixteen ITA detentions while in the field. And so that's a pretty big deal. And that's usually right around the average number of what crisis is doing as far as evaluations to detention ratio as well. So breaking that down individual cities, we have, you can see Kennewick is in there with one thousand seven hundred and five, Pasco with one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight a second, followed by Richland and all the way down. We have, before doing this, I didn't realize Port Pasco had their own dump, right? And so we've responded to five for Pasco, five times to Pasco Fire, which is not part of the grant. Like we said, it's very grant specific to law enforcement, but we're willing to help out and branch out. We've been out to Walla Walla and Connel a few times as well. So that brings at least the number piece to that and any other ongoing questions that you may have.
Council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you so much for the presentation. I've had the joy of hearing about this a couple of times in the past as part of the All-America City Awards. We were, you know, we were bringing through, forward a number of our, you know, hotspotters program. We're looking at the, you know, the embedded mental health staff. So this has been something that we have, we, you know, certainly we as a city have valued. And in fact, it's one of our, one of our council goals that we discussed for this biennium includes ensuring that we, there's some sort of, you know, stability and sufficient availability of resources in this area. You know, obviously we've seen a big improvement. I mean, I, could you just real quick tell me what's, in Pasco, what are the hours that are served for the? I mean, I, I, could, could you just real quick tell me what, what's in Pasco, what are the hours that are served for the mental health professional right now? So.
So typically, um, there's been some mild adjustments, but typically it's from about seven to midnight. So we have the day shift, which goes from seven to either three or five, or we'll do like an eight to six. And then we have swing shift, which runs from four to midnight.
And in terms of embedded, is it seven days a week?
Right now it's just Monday through Friday.
Yeah, cause I had the, um, unfortunate experience of having to, um, to, to call officers, um, over to my neighborhood because we had someone who was, um, um, taking pictures of houses up and down the street, but didn't quite seem like they were cognizant of what they were doing. Um, so on Sunday I had a call, we had, we had officers come out to help, um, you know, make sure that, you know, do a check on the person and. Apparently there was a little more activity after, after the person moved down the street a little bit, but, um, it was one of those perfect examples of what this person really needed was help. And the officers were able to, you know, um, to, to deescalate the situation and, and I, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the outcome was. You know, as good as can be from someone who, you know, probably needed more mental health support than they did police support. So I mean, I, I think when we, when you talk about what we would need for, um, for, you know, for Pasco to have a full cadre of support. I, I, I really do think that seven days a week would be amazing. It would be, uh, uh, the people who, who are in crisis don't just stop being in crisis because it. You know, it's three o'clock in the morning or it's, it's Sunday. That's just, that just isn't the thing. So, um. You know, I, I know that I'm, uh, I note the same thing that, um, my fellow council member Serrano noted that the, you know, look, uh, we're seeing the funding drop. We're seeing the number of FTEs available to provide these services are dropping. Our community is growing. Pasco, uh, the entire tri cities is growing rapidly. Less, we, we, as we've seen with officers, we, you have to have a certain number of officers per, per population to provide reasonable services. And I think we're in the same spot here. So I, I'm, I'm interested in what, what sort of, um, options we may have for additional funding. So if there's something that I, I personally as a council member can do, or perhaps my fellow council members would be interested in, you know, supporting any sort of outreach effort we can do. I know the state effort has, uh, the state legislature has just closed their session. So that whatever's, whatever's done in the budget is done now, but, um. If there's other opportunities, please, you know, please, please do reach out and we can hopefully, uh, hopefully see what we can do there. Uh, last question I have for you is, um, you'd mentioned a potential savings, you know, deferred costs in terms of less jail time. Um, you know, less officer support for in, in areas where maybe protective services aren't what's needed, but instead mental health services are what's needed. Um, do you have a ballpark of what sort of savings we're seeing out of this program? You know, uh, i- i- is there any numbers that you have that throw our way and, and if, if, if putting you on the spot right now isn't the thing, if you could follow up on email, I'd really appreciate it. Some sort of. Guesstimate on that.
Yeah, we'll get my contact and email.
Thank you. Uh, cause I think that would really help us be able to understand what the support of this, this can be. Whenever we can defer costs or reduce costs in other areas, well, it makes it a lot more, a lot easier for us to talk about, you know, transferring costs from one spot to another to, to, um, for services like this. So anyway, so thank you very much for what you do and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes, I just, uh, certainly wanna say thank you so much for your vocation and the, uh, hours invested in serving the most vulnerable in our community. It really is something that's, uh, is to be commended. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, and my question is to, uh, follow up, uh, on the weekend service. Um, do, do you see a, um, uh, decreased need or a in- increased need, uh, and, and just, you know, uh, um, for the service and how, how does that look like and what's the need on, on the weekend perhaps?
Yeah, we currently had to mesh with what the funding was, which is why we did that. Uh, we, we also tried to look at peak call time. And so when we, uh, worked with dispatch and kind of came up with when are the type of crimes that would have been more stereotypically committed during behavioral health emergencies. Uh, it was usually Monday through Friday, um, in, in that timeframe. And so that's why we made that decision. But the weekend, uh, is definitely, we, we hear it all the time from law enforcement, uh, if we could have more positions, you know, when are we gonna have more funding? And so it's, it's felt on all around. So yeah, I think anytime would be, uh, graveyard would probably be obviously the slower of the two, but the weekend would definitely be needed.
Yeah, I think, thank you for that. Um, I certainly echo, uh, um, what, what's been said already as far as, uh, our, our, our desire to support this. And it's certainly there, uh, uh, at least it is for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
Mayor?
Yes. One, one second, Mayor Protem. Did you get what you needed?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, yeah, chief, but a good point. Uh, we, we have had a better working relationship with officers and also letting the services they do know. And so we, we do have access to crisis still twenty-four seven. So if it is the weekend, they can, they can call over, get some consultation or get some assistance to come out as well.
And that's again, been one of the benefits of the program is that we've been able to encourage more working relationships between crisis and law enforcement. So if we aren't there. Um, it's easier for them to be able to call for assistance directly into the field with a DCR from crisis. So, and then with the weekends as well, because we aren't working, the officers will forward us reports. And we will try and do follow-ups as much as we can to try and find individuals who we haven't been able to see directly in the field on the weekends.
Perfect. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Roach, and then I'll go with you next, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Um, you are in the business of providing a diversion option for law enforcement. And so I'm interested in knowing if you have other suggestions or recommendations. For pairing this sort of diversion option with something else that we are not yet doing. Um, is that something that you can speak to?
Yeah, I, I think we have very specific needs in this community. Uh, we don't have any, uh, child or adolescent. Diversion beds at all, let alone a psych hospital. Uh, we do not have any, uh, detox beds, both social, medical and secure. Uh, we, uh, don't have specialized units for dementia, Alzheimer's, D D. I mean, so if there were. Other services in addition to what we, uh, did have, there would be a lot more diversion options for all of the population rather than just more of our adult population.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Uh, Mayor Protem Barahas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Cameron, uh, thank you so much for the presentation today. Uh, it's always good to see you, uh, sharing your information. Um, you partly answered my question, uh, which was regarding the hours and what happens during the weekends. Uh, so thank you for that information. Um, just another quick follow-up question, um, and maybe this is a question for chief. Are police officers still being trained to deescalate as part of their CIT trainings?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, uh, we continue with a pretty robust, uh, training program. That partnering with these professionals helps us enhance our continuous training that happens every single year. In addition to always looking to get more of our officers advanced training, you'll hear it talked about the forty-hour CIT advanced. So every one of our officers is basic CIT trained with continuous ongoing training. And, um, this partnership continues to help that. So yes, I guess to answer that, um, we continue with our, our CIT training. And, uh, and as best we can, uh, and we'll continue that moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And then I'll have, uh, one, one question that hasn't been asked about is, uh, translations. Is, is everybody, is there, I mean, are, are you guys required to be bilingual? No, yes? How do you do it when you confront a situation when it's, uh, somebody that doesn't speak English?
Yeah, it's definitely preferred, uh, to have individuals who are bilingual. Uh, we have quite a few on, uh, at crisis who are certified translators. So they can read, write and speak fluent. Um, and so we have access to them at crisis twenty-four seven, or we have the language line that we can utilize. And so we can call them and either put that on speakerphone or have, uh, depending on if it's needing to be in a private situation or not. But we can put the language line on hold and, uh, it goes, has a whole laundry list of whatever one we need.
Perfect. Well, thank you for your presentation tonight. We sure appreciate all the work you guys are doing. We, uh, we're really happy. I mean, I can sense from the council, we're happy to have you on board and looking forward to see how we can. Uh, make this work in the future to, to make it better for everybody. Cause it's obviously, it sounds like, uh, it's a benefit to our police officers, a benefit to. The expenses that we have in our, in our jails and I just appreciate, uh, the frontline working, uh, people that are doing. Good for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Alright. Next, we have a presentation, uh, two thousand twenty crime analysis. Chief Roski.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead and go with that.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. And, uh, So our, uh, twenty twenty calls or, or crime stats, um, probably need a little bit of cover. To also look at the level of calls for service that our officers handle, um, in addition each year. They kind of go hand in hand as we talk about crime stats. And so you'll notice on your first slide that, um, we had a slight reduction in calls for service last year. Um, obviously, uh, related to COVID, people staying in much, uh, through, through the beginning, um, in the high points of the pandemic. Um, less travel and stuff. So, um, calls for service, um, uh, with our increased population. We're starting to see that with a turn back around into the normal range. And I, I would not anticipate a reduction this year, um, although we're not seeing drastic increases. But, um, as of now, I would expect that to continue on more of a, more of a, um, average approach. We, uh, track crimes in two categories, uh, part one and part two. We utilize the FBI data reporting system known as NIBR's. National Incident Based Reporting System. And it breaks down, uh, part one crimes as, uh, murder. Uh, robbery, aggravated, uh, uh, assaults and burglary, motor vehicle thefts. And you can see that our, um, um, part one crime is broke down. You can see a, uh, a, a, a dot map, which kind of hard to see, I think, at, at that level. But what it, what we're trying to de- depict here is just that, um, crime. Where the dense populations of, of the public is kind of where you see the dense population, which would, which is what we would expect. Part two crimes are, I don't know if I wanna call them less serious, but you know, they're, uh, they're, uh, generally focused on misdemeanor type of crimes, uh, weapons offenses, sex offenses. And, uh, um, again, where you see the concentration of the public and activity level in the city is where you see those crimes. Hence the dark green spot. I did draw your attention to fraud being up sixty, sixty-eight percent. Um, caught me by, uh, a, a, alarm as well. When you see crime trends like that. That's gonna be related to, if you'll remember, the unemployment fraud from the state. Um, many of us in this room, well, several of us in this room got wrapped up in, in that as well. So. That's a, that's a skewed number, but those are certainly the things that we, uh, wanna pay close attention to, um, uh, as, as we're looking at crime trends. We like to look at crime, um, comparison from year to year. You've had presentations, uh, certainly by me, where we've talked about what the crime rate was. Twenty and twenty-five years ago and how we've been able to bring that crime down. So we look at those crimes, um, part one and part two crimes comparisons by, by year. Looking to see what the, uh, what the trend levels, what the trend levels are on those. And, um, um, no, no drastic increases one way or the other. Comparison, um, again, taking calls for service, arrests, um, uh, other activity level. So one of the things that, that we like to look at is how are we deploying our resources? Do we see a large case increase, work level increase, a large arrest increase? Um, and again, you'll see from, uh, from our, from our trends that we don't. Um, you'll, you'll see a little bit of a decrease in juvenile, um, arrests. Probably, probably just, um, not having, um, kids in school where they can talk to counselors. Um, they can report more crimes. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Um, what we wouldn't wanna see is a drastic increase. Uh, so as we come out of COVID, we'll wanna keep our eye on that and, uh, and make sure that any of these, these trends. Aren't spiking up or down on us. Trends per hundred thousand, uh, population. Again, as our population is increasing, it's certainly nice to see our crimes. Um, are staying level or slightly decreasing from a, uh, from a policing standpoint, from a public safety standpoint. Um, we, it, we obviously, um, look for those drastic increases again in, in any of those areas. And then, um, as we get into total calls for service, um, uh, that, this slide just depicts that we're moving along like we'd, we'd expect to see per, per hundred thousand. As we break those out, uh, case reports, um, and calls for service. It, it is always nice to point out, um, positive data. And, uh, once again, um, for population cities of fifty thousand and above in the state of Washington by safe homes. We, uh, we ranked third safest, uh, in, in, in the state. One, one of the, one of the things that we try and do with taking crime data. And, um, and, and analyzing that is making sure we're putting our resources where they need to be. Provide the very best public safety. And when we're talking crime, crime stats, um, reducing crime. Um, uh, it's important to monitor that and, uh, track that. And ensure we have the, the, the safety of the public in mind, the fear of crime under control in your neighborhood. We want you to feel safe in your neighborhoods where you're at. And obviously keeping crime under control is, is, is important from a public safety. Standpoint. We are, we're in the process now of, um, using crime data. To overlay with heat mats called data-driven policing. And it's a, a, a project that Captain Paramore, um, is undertaking. We're only a couple of months into it. We're gonna fine tune that. And the whole concept, uh, is to take crime data and ensure we're putting our resources, like I mentioned, uh, before, where, where we need to have them. And, uh, having a, a, a accurate, reliable, um, time certain data. That we can direct our resources, uh, is extremely important. We're getting better at that. And so, uh, look for more on that, uh, that program, uh, uh, down the road. Um, I, I think a focused response is probably one of the things that, that we try and do. So with that, that's a quick overview of crime, calls for service, uh, COVID bought us, uh, uh, some good numbers. But I'm, I, I, I think where we're going, the, the resources that we're, we're putting into our patrol divisions, our, uh, our detectives. Uh, crime fighting, uh, is certainly paying off and, um, uh, crime. Monitor, or, or looking at crime data, um, lets us believe we're doing the right things right now. So, questions?
Councilmember.
Thank you. Chief, you called attention to the one thing that really caught my eye, that fifty-one percent decrease in juvenile arrests. Um, and recognizing that COVID probably impacts juveniles more so than adults with, uh, movement and such. I guess what I'd like to, to ask or suggest or offer is, uh, uh, now that school's back in session full-time, if you, recognizing we have less than two months. If you find that there is some type of trend that demonstrates that that's not correct, if there's something that we as council can do, let us know. I mean, I, obviously we're not gonna go out there and fight crime. We're not Batman and women, um, but we're, you know. I guess, I, I don't really have a solution to that if it does, but if there's something we can do, uh, when we see the trend increasing. Or at least making us aware. If, if it's like, hey, over the last two months, it's back to normal. We need to do something about the juvenile offenders. I guess bring it to us or through the city manager.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely. I appreciate that. And again, these are, uh, um, one year of data with some. Uh, goofy things in there. Keep in mind that the court system was shut down for many, many months. So the opportunity for, for arrests of juveniles, um, through the court systems and stuff was greatly diminished. So who knows how, how much of an impact that had and what that's gonna look like now that we come out on the other end. Um, uh, hopefully we don't see a, a great increase, cause now the court systems are open, the prosecutor is able to actually. Charge, uh, juveniles and stuff. So we'll see what that looks like, but I appreciate the, uh, the offers.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Maloney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, uh, Chief Police, uh, Chief, Police Chief Roski. I appreciate the. Um, statistics there. I know, I was curious, where does shoplifting come in? Is it a part one or a part two crime? Really doesn't.
Part, part two crime, it's a theft.
Okay. Now, I was actually kinda quite shocked, cause I know as a business owner in downtown Pasco, we had a huge uptick in theft compared to any other year.
Right.
And even though this year's been a lot, lot better. Now, when you talk about theft, was it down? Now, when you talk about theft, was it down in the residential areas and up in the commercial? Or what were you guys seeing as in regards to that?
So I'd have to probably pull that actual specific data because this map is the whole city. I, I could pull, pull that up for you if you wanted to kind of see where thefts, just thefts are being pulled out. This is all part two crimes in here. So I, larceny, we, we could look at those.
But you didn't see any, I mean, I know our business was affected, but you're saying that most other businesses didn't have a problem or?
I, I, I don't know that. Uh, when, when you're looking at it in totality of, oops, of all the different crimes, I can't really tell that. I could pull just cry, uh, just shoplift data out for you if you'd like. And then we can look at that and see what that's looking like.
I was just curious compared to any other year because I know, again, for us, it was frustrating. And then, um, I did have a kind of a follow-up question. I know the times that we seemed to catch almost half of the people that were shoplifting, whether my employees were going after them or PD got there in time, um, I know a lot of them, they seem like they were, the people that were caught were let go pretty quickly. Now, a year later or a year and a half later, do they get sent in? Or how is, how's that work for the people that we did catch?
So, so typically, less serious crimes like that, um, would be cited. Um, and they get the opportunity to show up in the court. If they don't, they could get a warrant, um, issued for them. This last year, uh, was, wa- was specific. Even with warrants, we couldn't arrest people. If you'll remember, there was a moratorium on putting people into jail with the exception of serious, uh, serious crimes for several months in there in the middle of the pandemic. So, so you could have seen a little bit of people getting released, uh, with virtually nothing other than, uh, than, than a ticket that otherwise might have gone to jail, uh, because of the moratoriums, uh, through the pandemic.
Okay. So the ones that did get released, you're saying that eventually they will get their day in court if they s- stay in the area? Or is that what you're saying?
Well, it, a warrant would be, uh, issued.
Okay.
And then when they have contact with law enforcement again, uh, they'd be arrested and booked into jail and have to go before a judge.
Okay. Again, it's good to see crime down. It's just frustrating on the other hand when it goes up and you're directly affected. But, uh, I will say this year has been a lot better, and I can comment that the Pasco Police Department went beyond and as far as helping me get some of the stuff back. So I really appreciate, uh, some of the officers I worked with this year, Officer Fox and some of the other guys really, I thought did an exceptional job at least getting me some of this, my merchandise back. So I do commend you guys on that as far as going beyond. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melony. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, Mr. Roski. I appreciate the presentation. Um, I really enjoy seeing data, and one of the things I, 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 I see a lot of times data is, uh, hard to really translate into actionable, um, you know, this, this is our program based on what, what the data, data sign. So, uh, it's good to, to, to know that that's something that we're wanting to focus on. Any kind of, uh, uh, initial thoughts on what some of this data can do for us?
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, so crime data is nothing new. Uh, we've collected it for, for decades. Um, law enforcement collects a lot of data. What we aren't real good at is using the data to, to translate into results. Uh, hence some of the programs we're looking at, um, data-driven, uh, focused policing. So even though we've had decades of collecting data, um, we're going forward, doing a better job at utilizing this data to specifically target, uh, impacting crime.
Would that be more based on locations or based on, um, trends? Uh, I'm just curious kind of.
Sure, all of the above. We'll, we'll want to look at taking, um, where the crimes are occurring, um, in the city, uh, matching those with, uh, the types of crimes and then directing resources in there. Do we, do we know that crime is increasing between X hours in this location? Uh, Captain Paramore would then direct his resources, whatever that might look like, into those areas. Um, I, a- and I think trying to maximize the resources that we have, limited resources, but they're the resources that we have, maximize those to the best of our abilities. Um, and then, um, hopefully, the result is a crime under control or less.
Thank you for that. One of the resources, uh, that I, um, that the police, uh, directed me to was the community crime map. How accurate is, is that for, you know, the residents who are wanting to see those heat maps kind of for themselves? That LexisNexis, uh, website, is that, is that pretty reliable? I don't know if you, you, you?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, we are in the process now of reforming a data dri- or a data dashboard on our website. So, um, from a transparency standpoint and just a wanting to know standpoint, anybody in the community will be able to drive to our website and click on similar mapping like I'm sharing with you, which will be real time or virtually real time, and look at what crime is, is doing in their neighborhoods or across, excuse me, or across the city. So, um, uh, uh, that, that is a new program for us. LexisNexis is limited in what you get. It's accurate, but it's limited. We're looking to give you much more information, uh, going forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Councilmember Melony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, Chief, for this presentation. You know I'm a data guy, so I, so I, so I love that. Read all your backup slides too, so. So, so I guess, um, you know, it's, it's good that we're seeing the trends, you know, are pretty, pretty neutral in general, um, kind of when we're looking over those multiple year trends, and that's great. And I really appreciate this, this, um, data-driven approach that you're, you're discussing. So, um, you know, when we're talking about some of this though, and I know as we're talking to some of our business owners and, uh, residents in, in our communities, um, you know, some of the, some of these might be able to be affected by other policy decisions outside of the police department. And so I'd be really interested in understanding how we can take some, a holistic look in some of these cases. So, you know, there might be an area where we're seeing an increase in crime trends in, uh, you know, at the edge of a commercial district or something like that. Maybe the right answer is we put in a streetlight, and that helps us get to us, to a spot, or we invest in, um, maybe our, our next, uh, agenda item is talking about, um, you know, nuisance law, you know, chronic nuisance, um, uh, and, uh, facilities and, and such. And so we know that that is also a big driver in crime. We've seen that be a, be an issue for a number of our, our areas in our town. So I'd be very interested in seeing how we could, um, use some of the data that you're collecting and some of the conclusions you're coming to, to not just make a police-driven decision, but also make a policy-driven decision as to how we invest in our community to see if we can get some of those, some of those, um, softer impacts that improve the, the, uh, the, the quality of life and improve the, uh, you know, just, just how everything's functioning in our, our neighborhoods and districts. So I'm very interested to see more about that in the future.
Great, thank you. Yep, w- w- we've worked very closely with code enforcement, similar projects like that. And then, um, Pasco, um, city as a whole, departments as a whole, um, work very well at, uh, community, at a community governance standpoint, taking, um, all of our departments, looking at just those kind of, uh, uh, problems, whether it's a, uh, ju- just a police or just a code enforcement issue, and how can we work together at putting our policies in place to, to, to impact quality of life overall? Certainly, a piece of that for us and for my, uh, my department is looking at crime. But at the end of the day, it's really about the quality of life of the whole city.
And I, I guess, Chief, just to, just to make sure, let me say it a slightly different way. Um, I don't think I've ever seen, you know, Jacob Gonzalez, um, coming up from a planning perspective or Rick White in terms of some of these, it's, mostly the things that he come from, quote enforcement for sure, uh, or, uh, Steve Worley and, and, you know, bringing up a CIP that says, hey, we need to invest in this infrastructure here because our crime rates are up here, and we're seeing that if we do this sort of twist on it, maybe we can improve it.
Okay.
And maybe that's just not a thing that can exist, but it's, when I'm saying policy level, I know we have, we certainly have city policies and city approaches and, and, um, at the staff level that are, are fantastic, and I'm, I'm positive there's good working at level. I guess I, I think that there's enthusiasm across this city council to see how we can support and, uh, from a strategic perspective and, uh, you know, and a visioning perspective as to how we can invest resources at our level to make sure that those things are, are being able to flow down that way. That was, that was, that was the point I was meaning. We want, we will, we want to help. I guess that's what I'm adding to the conversation. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilmember Melony. And I'll give, uh, Mayor Protem an opportunity if she wants. Okay. I, I guess I would just finish, uh, Chief Roski by asking the question, um, you know, in, in, in my experience, uh, socioeconomics has a lot to do with crime rates. Um, the, uh, stats you had appear from Safe Home on Pasco being, you know, third safest city, uh, for a population over fifty thousand. I think it's something our community should be proud of, our police department, our staff. I think it's wonderful. And so, uh, keep up the great work. Obviously, there's always more work that can be done, correct? Uh, and I think for, and, and seeing that Kirkland and Samamish were, you know, ahead of us, uh, I know that per capita or per household, there's a lot of, there's a lot more income there than, than what we would have in Pasco. So again, that's another reason for us to be proud of, uh, just the quality of people we have in our communities. But how can we get better? Are we, um, can, can we just kind of evaluate and maybe study what it is that they are doing? Uh, have we researched that to, to try to, you know, even increase, um, our stats in a positive direction?
Yeah, we, we, uh, have a whole team, referred to our ARO programs, uh, out there, and they look all across, uh, this state, all across the country. Uh, I know, uh, my peers at the chief level, um, we share ideas and are constantly looking. I think you could bring a good point. Uh, maybe we should look specifically at those to see if they have some, uh, programs that maybe we aren't using, uh, as those two cities. But there's other cities that we continue to look at, at the peer levels, uh, and share ideas. And we, we plagiarize an awful lot from other police departments, and, uh, we have a lot of police departments, uh, uh, plagiarizing from us too. So it really is at the end trying to have the best communities for, for us here, and that's certainly our focus.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Oh, we got one more.
I have one more. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Roski, for your, um, presentation. And I just wanted to say for those who are listening and maybe can't see the graphics on TV that, you know, under the part two crime, every single, uh, category of crime, assault, forgery, stolen property, malicious, malicious mischief, and the list goes on, except for two, they're all down in the negative from the year before. And I've been reading, um, about the Washington Supreme Court's, uh, decision to decriminalize the personal amount, quantity amount of drug possession, and I don't know what the exact amount is, but that people could have a personal amount of drugs on them without it being a criminal offense. And so I'm curious to know, and I, I don't want to add more to your work, but I do want to know the data point is how, if we have that kind of, I guess, classification of knowing whether people are above that amount when they're arrested for that particular crime or, um, within that amount, and how that changes our data in the coming year, um, if that makes sense, just to see if that trend still goes downward.
Yeah, uh, we could pull data, uh, pretty easily with people arrested for delivery of a controlled substance versus possession of a, of a lesser amount. We could certainly pull that data. That's that data point. And then I think it'll certainly take us some time to determine what, uh, crime gets associated with that. Um, it does appear that the legislature has a fix to leave, uh, simple possession still a crime. Uh, and, uh, more, more to come on that. But, um, I, it, it doesn't appear like, uh, they walked away from it and will let, uh, simple possession of, uh, of a hard drug uh, uh, be, be legal, uh, in this state. So more, more to come on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach, and I can appreciate that question because one thing, you know, the law keeps changing every once in a while, and the reality is, is how safe do your people feel in your community, and that's why we do surveys. That's why we want to hear from our community. And then we do, we, we do hear those things when you fill out the surveys and, and, uh, respond to, you know, the questions we have for them. So that's just one way of making our city even better. So thank you very much for your report. And if nobody else has any questions or comments, uh, we'll move right along. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support of the police department.
All right, next, we will have, um, an ordinance, PMC Chronic Nuisance Update. And we have Director Rick White. Are you on the line tonight? Yes, we, now, um, if he's having some technical difficulties, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel, would you like to present, uh, the staff?
Let me get to that. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I, I think I am back on. Uh, it's, my audio has been going in and out, so I'll try to do my best.
Well, we can hea- we can hear you now, Director White. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, and just very quickly, because I can't guarantee I'll be heard very much longer, but, uh, five years ago in twenty sixteen, the city adopted its first chronic nuisance ordinance. It's been amended, uh, just a couple of times since then. But obviously, the point of the entire effort was to address properties that present chronic, recurring and, uh, seemingly unsolvable nuisance problems with our current system of enforcement. Um, the proposed revisions in the proposal tonight do a couple of things from the twenty seventeen version. They simplify many of the definitions and qualifiers for becoming a chronic nuisance. They shorten the compliance timeframes, and they eliminate, uh, several loopholes that we've discovered are being used by, uh, actually a very small number of problem properties. Uh, we have, uh, four or five that are problems, and the vast majority of all other prob- uh, properties really do a, a pretty good job, uh, through our existing code enforcement program. But tonight, uh, Troy Hendren, our Inspection Service Manager, will be giving council a presentation on, uh, the proposal and on, uh, uh, enforcement of, uh, nuisance activities in particular. And I'll, uh, turn it over to Troy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White, and Troy, good evening, and thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, yeah, just to kind of go through this little bit, quick history, uh, let's see, Chronic Nuisance Code is created in twenty sixteen. Uh, let's see, created due to a small percentage of properties receiving high number of complaints and police calls. Uh, code enforcement works with Pasco Fire Department, Benton Franklin Health Department, State Transient Accommodations, and many, many other, uh, departments. Um, I think Chief Roski said it well. Um, Pasco's really good at working with, uh, you know, internally and externally with a lot of different departments. Let's see, so the goal was to encourage, uh, compliance. So basically, the first was being very proactive. We were, we were meeting with everybody. It was the Chief of Police, uh, Director White and myself, and we were trying to get a game plan with these individuals. Um, the second was, uh, allowing some time doing like a voluntary correction agreement, saying, you know, okay, how much time do you need to clean up these properties? You know, what's a realistic timeframe? And then we kind of work it out together. Um, if that didn't work out, then of course we'd go towards the, the penalty enforcement. Um, that was always kind of the last resort. All right, so, so I, I, I want to stress the, the issues that we found. Um, you know, these are, these are the obstacles that we, that we ran into that really kind of hindered the, the Chronic Nuisance Code for enforcement. Um, we focus mainly on the criminal activity, not really the nuisance portion of it, uh, difficulty determined compliance. So this example is actually, um, this is a, this is a real case. We have a, a thirty-four unit motel, um, it can receive two hundred and ninety-seven police calls, four warrants, twenty-one code enforcement calls, all within a hundred and eighty days, and it's still meeting compliance. So that was the original code. We, we created it, and unfortunately, our, the numbers just didn't work. So we had to tweak it a little bit, and we still were just not quite there. Um, that's, that's really difficult to explain to citizens why we can't act on it and tell them, hey, this is still in compliance. It's very difficult. Uh, let's see, uh, limited enforcement based on definitions cited in the code. So we just kind of cleaned up a lot of the, the, the verbiage. That was kind of the goal there. Determination of violations were complex, um, same thing. Um, timeframe for compliance was too lenient. So again, um, once you communicate with the people, once you create the VCA, um, as long as it was never appealed, I mean, this could be ninety-five to a hundred and eighty days before we'd ever even get close to compliance. And again, so I, I want to stress, this is not an overhaul of the code. This is just kind of fine tuning it a little bit. So the goal was to, uh, the simplifying the numbers and type of violations. We're, uh, reducing nuisance activities timeframes from, um, three acts down to sixty months, four acts to a hundred and eighty, um, seven acts to, uh, an entire year. Uh, the goal was to shorten the timeframe for compliance from ninety days to sixty days. And let's see, added, uh, additional code violations, um, such as abandoned structures and fire code violations. Abandoned structures, we've never really been able to do too much other than keep the grass low and, and make sure it's boarded up so we don't have transients getting in there, kids getting in there, starting fires. Same with fire code violations. We get, uh, we have a select few pro- We get uh, we have a select few properties that get an obscene amount of false alarms. The code is not very strict for us, so we added that to the Chronic Nuisance Code so we could have a little bit more um. Little bit more strength to see if we can get it um in compliance a little quicker. Let's see, uh clarify verbiage definitions and written actions uh with property owners. Initiate additional consultation prior to um enforcement. So the goal is to get a good game plan with those individuals. Again, this is very select few properties that are deemed chronic nuisance. So of course, I've got pictures. That's, that's always the good thing about code enforcement. So junk and debris, this is a property that comes into compliance um. About every three months and then uh about a month later, it looks just like this again. Got it, this is in a um very heavily populated area and uh obviously we get a lot of complaints about it. See, this is another property here, um off to the right where you see this door. There's actually people living in there. Um no water, no heat, no uh no sewer, just an extension cord for a little bit of lighting. This is another chronic nuisance property that uh will clean up and then get bad again. And this is uh, this is typical for a lot of motels and uh. Or I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, I'm sorry. This is, this is very typical to a few of the motels that are on the Chronic Nuisance uh list. So and it's been a huge problem. We've got top plates, cooktops, overcrowding, excessive use of uh extension cords. These are huge fire hazards. Um and we've, we've been seeing that a lot, especially since uh the past year with COVID. Bedbugs, infestations, um I don't need to stick on this one very long, but it's uh about the same thing. It's. We have some certain properties that are chronic with this nuisance. Same with dozens of occupied RVs on streets, parking lots, city parks, um these are getting very heavily populated. Abandoned structures, uh we do have multiple properties. Um I think the last count was like twenty-two or twenty-three properties that were abandoned. Kinda like what I explained earlier, the goal is to um, goal is to get these cleaned up, right? Resold and and. Be a be a good member of society. So all the slides shown are all the properties that we have and uh we have uh hundreds of uh employee hours. That are put into this and uh again. The goal is just to uh tighten up the uh code a little bit.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions or Councilmember Roach?
Yes, so specific question, I remember when I was outdoor knocking and I encountered a so a homeowner who. Said that their their yard, which was very dry, um that she had been to a uh. Code enforcement several times because of having a nuisance property. It was a fire hazard because of. Dead tree and and I I guess proximity to maybe electrical lines. I'm not sure what all the reasoning was. Um that she went through the process, so. But her explanation to me was that I am doing zero escape. And so I didn't really have much to say and so I was curious as far as in this code. How do you make room for the distinguishment of what is zero escape, which is typically very dry and easily. Uh flammable um and chronic nuisance of of a fire hazard in a yard.
So the zero escape would be under the zoning code and that is something that code enforcement does does enforce. The Chronic Nuisance Code would be properties that have a large number of police calls, EMS calls, code enforcement uh complaints. That is, it'd be very difficult to have one individual's yard be a chronic nuisance. Not saying it can't be, but it it would be pretty difficult. You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Councilmember Aldretto.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor, thank you, Mister Anderson, for that, for your presentation. Um yeah, there's certainly a difference between folks who are, you know. Having a hard time financially and trying to figure things out versus folks who are kinda gaming the system, moving their car just in time. And you know, before their deadline comes out and then they just go through the cycles. Um and so I certainly wanna. Um it's be in support of being able to tighten that up to, you know, to um help help this the the. Just the community for for the better good of the community. Um I I did have a question uh as pertaining to the uh abandoned. Um structures, is is what's our mechanism for that? Do we contact the the potential persons who are on, who were owners or are owners? Uh who are on the, you know, on the, I guess, county registered in the county? How how do we go through that process?
Well, absolutely. We uh we contact the property owner or or we we do our best attempt to contact the property owner. If we cannot, then we hire an abatement company and we go and we'll we'll either mow or we'll secure the property uh so it's safe. That's about as far as we can go right now.
Do you have a pretty um good uh database of what of those properties in the in the city, kinda what what the what that looks like?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aldretto. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you so much for for this presentation. I know we talked just a few months ago and uh you mentioned this is on its way and I'm. Glad to see it in front of us because uh, you know, we certainly know that there's a couple, couple of property owners that are just not being good neighbors. And so I'm looking forward to being able to tighten that up a little bit so we can, you know, as you were saying, it's the the point isn't punishment. The point is to have a have a city that's well functioning um and all works well, works well together, right? So I do have a couple of questions. Um one is um, we you know, we have a, we have an entire section about drug-related activity. Which we're calling out separately from any other the violations of the PMC or the RCWs. Um and I I was kind of surprised to see that a little bit, just highlighting that. Uh but regardless of that, given what's happened recently at the state in terms of the court, the the Supreme Court decriminalizing possession. And then um the state legislature doing a partial recriminalization, does that affect how this, how this section is written or?
No, I don't believe so. I I did work with uh legal and I I I don't believe that that's gonna affect us that much. No, sir.
Okay, cuz I I know that just happened like, you know, just just before the session ended, so we're, you know, I know it's quick turnaround on the, on some of that.
And I can jump in on that uh as well, uh Councilmember Maloney, this is Attorney Jeff Briggs at Kerr Ferguson. Yeah, um what constitutes a a nuisance versus criminal activity, those are 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 two different types of situations. The nuisance activity is civil in nature and so you can have things that constitute a nuisance that aren't uh necessarily a criminal law violation. So, so we should be fine on that phone.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification. It was just when we started ref- referencing back to the RCWs for defining what um a drug-related activity was. I was, that's where I was. Just concerned.
Right, uh sorry to, sorry to uh cut you off there. We did add knowing to possession. When you look at the um definition there of drug-related activity, it adds knowing possession, which is gonna be in conformity with the um. The bill that's on the horizon as well as the holding of the late decision.
Alright, thank you, appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome.
Um so the other question I had is it looked like we struck out the portion that specifically talk talked about call volumes? And so when we have the, you know, the, the, you know, there are obviously some exceptions to to, you know, specific calls were were counted there, but it's just. Um repeated phone calls, but without a specific activity, is that still in there? Cuz I I see that that as part of, was it? Nine dot ninety-five dot oh five oh, determination of chronic nuisance property. Um there was a sport that was police, fire and code enforcement service calls that struck out and has just backed the chronic nuisance activities. But I recall being enumerated just phone calls or repeated uh calls to police or or fire.
Right, a- and that's exactly what I was saying earlier about we're reducing that number greatly. Um where we where it was, you could have two hundred and ninety-seven police calls. You know, thirty-two code enforcement calls and they would still be in compliance. So that's what we're doing is we're reducing that number greatly. And they have to be legal um nuisance codes. They they can't just be random um. Small little items, garbage or litter in the in the front. I mean, it has to be something that's continuous. And there's, there's a explanation in there. In the uh description of of what an actual nuisance code is.
Right, I, yeah, I was just, I was just looking at how we struck a cer- certain language, so I was just trying to understand how that all plays together, what it was and now what it is, so. Appreciate that. Anyways, I I I'm I'm supportive of us moving for a tighter version of this. Obviously, it's it's needed. There's. You know, I I understand there's a very small number of property owners that are interested in gaming the system and those ones are a real pain in our rear. So I'm glad you're uh. You're you're, we're cleaning this up and uh I'll be certainly supportive as to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Well, I. Oh, yes, Mayor Protem Barajas, go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Thank you Troy for um and and Director White for bringing this forward. Um yes, uh. I was working with the uh Councilmember Maloney on an issue, some complaints. And we did have a meeting with Chief and Director White and Troy. Um so I I am too in support of this and I'm I'm very happy to see it coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ca- uh Mayor Protem Barajas, and I'll finish by thanking you for your service. Um many times this job is thankless. But I know that the majority of the city uh community appreciates that we maintain order this way. I know that with as fast as we're growing here and. The value of homes going up more and more, you know, we are struggling to find homes for people that are affordable. And therefore, you know, they'll go buy a a RV trailer and park it somewhere and they wanna live there and things of that nature as you indicated in one of your slides. But I would encourage the community and anyone who is in that position to call and make sure that um that they are compliant. And that find a way uh to make it work with with our city staff and then that's the best way to go about being compliant and not having to. Pay more money to to re-accommodate your living, uh your your place of where you live. So. Anyway, I just wanted to share that. Thank you very much for your presentation and uh looking forward to uh this bring coming to council for for vote.
I had a quick question.
Oh, oh, you have more, I'm sorry. So Councilmember Milley, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Hey, uh yesterday I was in Seattle and namely actually Ballard and uh they had some, you know, phenomenal buildings. And you know, the part of it looked great. And then other parts as were these really nice, brand-new uh buildings where you would see. A trailer or a broken-down uh motorhome. And uh my question is, you had mentioned that. And it was actually shocking to see people living within, you know, twenty yards of a beautiful building. What is, I mean, our code, I mean, is it like the same? I mean, how how is it? How are people able to do that in such a a nice city such as Ballard? I mean, I just hate to see the same thing happen in. You know, the city of Pasco where people put a lot of money into a building and the next thing you know, you see this broken-down trailer and people and it just looked. Phenomenally, I we were actually shocked how bad it looked. What uh, I mean, are we addressing that in the code? I mean, can? What uh, what are your thoughts on all that?
Absolutely, we're addressing that, absolutely. Um and that's another reason why we're trying to tighten up the Chronic Nuisance Code is we can. We can have a little bit more more strength in in for enforcement. And we can um start with that voluntary correction agreement, actually sitting down with these individuals and saying, look, you know, there's a lot of different places you can put this. You know, what do you need to get it into those, you know, one of those places? What's sad is a large number of these RVs are being parked in somebody's parking lot and they're actually paying that that uh landowner to park there. And it's usually kind of a push if they just went to an RV park. The price is about the same and they get. Water, sewer, garbage and everything that they need, an actual green grass around them instead of asphalt. So that's, that's another reason. I think a lot of it's just educating the individuals. A lot of these individuals don't know that they can go to these RV parks and we have quite a few of them here in the Tri-Cities, not just in Pasco, so. Again, I think a lot of it is just, at least seventy-five percent is educating the people.
Okay, well, thank you all, we said, and supported this too. I definitely want our city Pasco to be a beautiful city that people are proud to come to, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Milley, and uh just a little bit on that, I mean, even our trailer park should get in full, but uh.
Yes.
But yes, that's why I wanted to to take out the message is just contact city staff so that you don't have to uh. Have more cost in moving and and doing those kind of things. So yes, thank you. Councilmember Sharona.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um and thank you for the presentation. Couple of comments, uh and this is maybe more editorial. Section nine point nine five point one ten, it talks about nothing prohibits the city from taking any emergency action. Typically, we define that as like a department or an individual or someone authorized. I'm indifferent, but you know, I I don't know from a legal standpoint if we need to have an, you know, like. An authorized individual like the director or his designee or something like that. So just kind of food for thought on that and maybe that's more for um. Uh for Craig, um Attorney Craig, Mister Briggs, that is. Um similar comment on nine point nine five one hundred sub five, talks about jointly joint liability. Um and it talks about both owner and possessor jointly liable, question whether we may wanna consider joint jointly and severally liable. Meaning if we can't collect all from one, we can collect all from the other. Um again, more for Mister Briggs to consider. Um and then probably the biggest one that I had a question on was nine nine five oh two oh, which is an adoption of. The twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. Um I love seeing an adoption of code by reference, probably several hundred pages. I don't know what it means. Um without, and and I don't wanna get into the weeds of all the details of the code here. I think. Uh if there's anything unexpected in the code or that would somehow be contrary, please be aware of that. And consider that adoption by reference. Um you know, again, I I see stuff like uh. You know, plumbing code, the international, you know, international standards are adopted by reference and then you're bound to that. And so I guess to the point, without having to look it up and read it, um just for awareness. Because I don't know what it says, I'm always leery of adopting an entire code by reference without knowing it.
Just answer that really quick. Uh city of Pasco, along with uh dozens of other cities have been. Have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code since uh two thousand. Um we have as well. Uh it was just kinda nice to put that extra note in there, just kinda reiterate it.
No, I appreciate that. Like I said, when I see something adopted by reference and it's not in front of me and quite frankly, I probably wouldn't have read it anyway. You know, I I just wanna make sure that it speaks to what we're doing, but I appreciate that background, having, knowing that we've done it for twenty-plus years is always helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharano, and that's why we have a very nice, rounded and diverse uh council. Um Mayor Protem Barajas, any other comments?
No comments for me, thank you.
Well, Troy Hendren, uh thank you for your your presentation and for providing this information. We're looking forward to uh looking this to adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, we have miscellaneous uh miscellaneous council discussion. City Manager Dave Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor Council, and thank you. Uh just a couple of comments I wanted to mention and I I know you're all aware that legislature. Uh adjourned yesterday, as a matter of fact, uh with within their regular session. Uh probably not a surprise to most of you, but they did not pass a transportation package. There's a possibility that they may come back for a special session and look at that. But no guarantees, but uh on your legislative agenda, uh we're uh the million dollars for MLK Center. Survived the capital budget process and that's on to be signed by the mayor. So that's a great start. Ryman Center also was awarded and this would be providing. Uh key infrastructure uh out uh to the Ryman Center for uh industrial uh development. So roads, utilities, things like that. Uh seven point five million dollars. Uh I think something that uh. Uh we've had to battle in years past uh that we didn't have to this year, which was a, what was a nice thing, state shared revenues. So a lot of the revenues we count on, the per capita revenues for uh any number of different things, liquor, transportation, those kind of things. Uh those those uh survived and um and then there's a lot of, and we talked about this a little bit tonight. There are a number of significant uh investments in treatment and diversion programs. Yeah, one of them caught my uh really forty-five million dollars for to implement a statewide recovery navigator program. And so we have a resource navigator program. Uh it's the next level past MOPS in terms of the the longer-term care. That's the piece that kinda helps our folks that might be in distress. Uh MOPS takes care of them in the moment and kinda gets them safe and and into someplace for a few days. Our resource uh navigator in fire, uh which I I think probably this program might be similar. Uh the recovery navigator, they call it here, uh allows access to this longer-term care. Uh yeah, and behavioral health services, so. That that could be a real opportunity for for helping solve some of the disco- problems that we talked about earlier tonight, so. Uh a number of other things, uh uh but I I did wanna mention that that particular program, but there's several million other dollars. Uh that they've put into uh homeless outreach, stable. That particular program, but there's several million other dollars uh that they've put into uh homeless outreach stabilization and. And uh opioid use, about five million dollars, so the number of programs that we may be able to access to kind of help our situation here too. And I I I'm pretty sure there was money in there, at least at one point in time, for the uh Two Rivers uh Behavioral Health uh Facility. I I don't know where that is, it's not in this report that I was just reading from Brianna, but uh. Uh I I will follow up on that in the next day or two and get that information to you too, because that was uh. You we we had that great presentation uh last fall from uh Lee Kerr, and and I know that project uh was much talked about. Uh in Olympia, actually, virtual Olympia uh this session, so with that, I didn't really have anything beyond that for this evening.
Alright, uh council, anything for miscellaneous items? Okay, well, we'll move right along to the next uh item, uh do we have a need for an executive session tonight?
Not this evening.
Not this evening? So with that, uh appreciate everybody coming, and um it is eight thirty-one, and this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.